Nine o'clock. I'm gonna start the December the ninth.
Meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You guys got work to do? Because I was gonna go ahead and get you guys done and get it over with so you guys can get out of here. Okay, let's go ahead and get it done. This is the proclamation. The twenty twenty-four year Ross County post Tyler Booger. Tyler Booger began his patrol career with Ohio State Patrol in two thousand and fifteen as a member of the one fifty-ninth Academy class. Throughout his thirty-year career, Trooper Booger has numerous commendations, including Criminal Patrol Award from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-four. The Ace Award performed in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. And the Blue Max Award for Recovery, the Most Stolen Vehicle in Ohio. We do grow things out there. I'll chop down the most plants. Trooper Booger was also selected, was selected for this award by his peers for his notable leadership qualities and community involvement, coupled with professionalism in his interaction with colleagues, supervisors, and colleagues. Trooper Booger Award places him in contention for the district and state Trooper of the Year Award to be determined later this year. The Ross County Commissioners wish to express gratitude and appreciation to Trooper Tyler L. Booger for his many years of dedication service to Ohio State Patrol and the safety of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't put it in the way that.
Get that table out of there.
Hey, good luck, man. Hey, be safe.
Thank you, Mr. America.
Glad to be with you. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Very much appreciated, Mr. Garrett, for realness today.
Second, all favors say aye. You grab some cable, buddy. You say your word. I need a motion for minutes of last week.
So.
Second, all favors say aye. About what's due. The bill for the week. One million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and two cents.
Everybody got almost a million dollars.
Almost a million dollars.
Grant money coming in. That expense?
No, second, all favors say aye. But then now. Twenty-one thousand four dollars and five cents. So, second, all favors say aye. But a thank you letter from Judge Yen.
You're welcome.
Got Lucy, hey, I'll be okay. Lucy Web A's Heritage Center Newsletter. And if anybody wants to go, they're having their annual anniversary dinner. Once again, being here, this is gonna be on Saturday, December twenty-eighth.
Five dollars ticket.
Twenty-five dollars ticket. Four o'clock, it'd be circa four o'clock, the first night dinner will start at five o'clock. Anybody's interested?
You gotta go there.
You'll be alright. We have a letter from me with him poke. The design is see from the board of trustees. Ross Chillicothe, Virginia, visitor of year of effective December thirty-first, twenty-four. We can motion to accept his resignation. So moved, second, all favors say aye.
Can we make a recommendation from our office?
Yes. We have a request. Transfer funds from wellness programs that go two thousand dollars, increase appropriation for wellness payout, two thousand dollars. Second, all favors say aye. You know, Ross County Commissioners, run the Commissioners, general fund. Other expenses, point five hundred dollars, additional funds for the membership services, J C. Second, all favors say aye. The Ross County Commissioners from the Auditor's Office of General Fund grants others forty-three thousand dollars, the increased appropriation to cover one hundred thousand dollars, local contribution awards for general fund. The VACM renovation project, resolution ten seven twenty-four.
Just throw the turf.
Just throw the turf.
Right, right.
Well, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're being.
I knew you were just working on Paul there.
Forty-three, forty-three thousand dollars for increased appropriation to cover one hundred thousand dollars, local contribution awards to general fund, the general fund, the VA, one of the saving.
That's for that project, so they're moving that money around, right? Did you do part of that, right? Did you do any of that with that old Jerry?
Jerry did it.
I told him we need to have, he need to get our portion of money so solid.
Okay.
And I've been trying to, I've been trying to talk to folks at OFCC, but they're out till Tuesday. Because he's, he really wants to get that project started because he can save money, he can get them to work this year. Thirty grand, that's a lot of money. I'm afraid if we start the project using our own money, that may hinder our, our ability to give the grant funds.
Yeah.
So I wanna make sure before I say go ahead and start that they, so I'll wait till tomorrow, they're supposed to be back tomorrow now.
Right, and I've been talking about maybe funding money, anticipating participation in the receiving the grant. Right, he can get started before the end of the year.
That would be saying that thirty-five, he can say that thirty-five dollars.
Right. Or that, and he can keep the schedule.
Yeah, that's his.
Really, his last week, no, he's got baseball. They were fifteen.
He does, yeah. So. And that's what I said, maybe I'll change your schedule, just plan what you have, and if he'll lose that other tournament in March, if he doesn't have the new turf, he'll go somewhere else.
Or on a straight road to get grant money for it anyway, in front of, you know.
Right, it is more than for you to consider and check because there are grant, or grant left, you'll become disqualified for it if you've already started to work.
Right, well, they, a lot of them don't like that at all, so yeah, that's why I'm checking.
So, let's find out. Need lift, need lift and transfer that to forty-three thousand dollars. Second, all favors say aye. New Commissioners, appointment and development. This is the W P C L F. Sue replacement. Four thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, the increased appropriation to a lot funds from the twenty twenty-four W P C L F to pay the remainder of the last dollar of the year. Second, all favors say aye. New Commissioners, Ross County Auditor Group Insurance, hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, increased preparation to cover cost of December's group insurance premium. Said for countywide. And second. Yes. Said from, where's that from? Do the Commissioners from the Auditor's Office.
It's the foundation group insurance.
Group insurance.
Or they are, they just want to.
They just want to group, it's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah. Second, all favors say aye. The Auditor's Office, General Fund, salaries, employees, contact services. Seventeen thousand dollars. No appropriation increase transferred to an unexpected invoice with twenty twenty-three web host. No absolution. This is the transfer out of his wages and right, transfer out of his wages, go to contact service.
I got no problem with him taking some money out, different accounts, pay certain things, but what, what access?
It's, uh maybe a point, others LLC. On the, I would say, who's being, life and scrubber. January the first of twenty twenty-three through December thirty-fourth of twenty twenty-three.
Is that the assessments of property values?
I don't.
Yes.
I'm trying to read.
Paying both in twenty twenty-three. They were twenty twenty-three, I'm not sure.
Was it?
It's paid the current though, but it looks like they just wanted to miss.
Well, I guess, he signed the, the estimate of services in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, I can see it, but.
This is for twenty twenty-three, January the first, twenty twenty-three, it sounds like it's a year old.
Yeah.
And we're considering, it's not.
So it looks like, it looks like they missed.
They missed the payment in twenty twenty-three.
They missed.
They was gonna pay it, made it since, I think, you know. Four twenty. Oh, really, I appreciate the flexibility. For further analysis, it looks like we didn't receive payment for twenty twenty-three either. Yes. Yeah, he was, he was, yeah, but I don't see if he got it here. Not yet. This is a good.
Hey, good morning, hey, I've been called Jeff, is he in here today?
But I have been the first invoice.
Would you mind asking him to come up here real quick with your question regarding one of his transfers?
Send prior invoices of January twenty-three, January twenty-two, and January twenty-one.
Yeah.
Comparisons, as well as a copy of the contract with Triple Point at Ross County currently do business. I wasn't left with much to work with, stuff on this, as my predecessor, and I'm working to get things.
Okay.
Records in order. That's why I tell me. So, previous.
Okay, thanks, bye. Be up here in class.
Looks like to me it was not paid in twenty twenty-three. Jeff did not have an invoice.
In January of twenty twenty-three, Jeff wasn't.
We send the prior invoices for January twenty-three, January twenty-two, and January forty-one, so we can compare.
Sounds to me he's like, he's like he's cleaning up twenty-two.
Right. I really appreciate the question, and it says, he did not receive payment in twenty twenty-three.
Sure, I'm, I'm thinking Jeff's just trying to clean up some of that.
Just not.
That was not a good thing.
Twenty twenty-two was paid in January twenty-two, twenty-one was a crucial year, it's fully just as a commission since Ross County, since Ross was our first website client. Why don't I do that first?
It's very possible that they're their first, their company may just not, thought they emailed an invoice and.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. Because the twenty twenty-two was paid in January twenty twenty-two. But they didn't receive, no, no name in twenty twenty-three.
Says nothing to the side of filing card.
I don't wanna do this. I don't wanna do this, because that means, I don't wanna do this.
I'm gonna put you on speaker, they have a question for you regarding the contract invoice where they missed the payment in twenty twenty-three. Okay. That's kinda what we figured, but we. Okay. Okay, that's what we thought. Thank you, bye.
That's what it was.
Yeah, they either missed the payment or they never received it, so. It's just to clean that up.
So, you second on my.
Second, all favors say aye. That was twenty-three, yeah, point four, end of point four. Commissioners, run the Commissioners, General Fund utilities, three hundred fifty-four dollars. Payed last middle of the year.
Is that what?
That's us, the transfer.
Transfer, distransfer.
So.
Second, all favors say aye. At the end of the year. The Prosecutor's Office, General Fund Supplies, two hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, need additional funds for research, wall books.
Three hundred dollars.
Two hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-three, twenty-seven cents. So, second, all favors say aye.
Don't we have copies of that in the law library?
Yeah. That's Prosecutor's Office.
Uh, this is from the Ross County Shares Office, Re-Tro, the salaries reimbursement, five thousand twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. Other expenses, reimbursement, two thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-nine cents to reimburse unused funds from the twenty twenty-four Room Tro grand.
You can do that with other things outside of Room Patrol.
Yes.
So.
Second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Transfer funds.
Oh, that's a cash transfer.
Yeah, this is a cash transfer, going to going from the general to the VA, to the VA facility there. One hundred thousand dollars, so, second, all favors say aye. That little thing, I was gonna stop there for a while. Auditor's Office, Real Estate Assessment. Salary for employees contacting services twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Group insurance one hundred seventy-three dollars fifty-three cents. Equipment, two hundred fifty dollars, other expenses, two hundred fifty dollars. Hers, two hundred dollars, supplies, two hundred fifty dollars. Medicare, one hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents. No increase in appropriations. Solidated funds to pay final reappraisal contract invoice for twenty twenty-four, twenty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and three cents.
Assuming that's commercial.
And no one didn't say that.
Well, I thought that private residence, the residential assessments are all done.
This is just now paid.
That could be too.
This is the final, this is the final, this is to pay the final reappraisal contract invoice for twenty twenty-four.
That would be the presidential.
Yeah, so, second, all favors say aye. All right, this is from John Family Services, I'm sending over a twenty twenty-five cost rejection and M O U. Jessica Missus Review and some increased. Twenty twenty-three, it was six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents. And it increased one hundred dollars and sixty cents to seven thousand ninety-five dollars and seventy. So. Second, all favors say aye. Here's a bill for J D C for, what's another number? Fifty-two thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-three cents, so, second, all favors say aye. This is Resolution, Resolution zero fifty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing Kim R. H. D. As a authorized signer for Jay Damage Schumaker, Director of Planning and Development, whereas Ross County Planning and Development Department occasionally requires a timely execution of documents, contracts, and other administrative scruple as ensuring the effective operation of the department functions. Whereas it is in the best interest of the Ross County Planning and Development Department to designate an alternate, also as an authorized signer to act on behalf of the department director when necessary. Kim R. H. D., this is qualified employee, who has demonstrated the capabilities and trust in this, feel this responsibility. This is given to Kim, authorization to sign in the absence of Damage Schumaker planning and development. So, second, all favors say aye. Amendment to owner-engineer agreement.
Right.
Owner authorized the engineer to perform additional service outlined in exhibit A two. For this work included, although monitoring of unit price, send a visit to determine. Correct.
I think that might have come out on Friday, I'm not sure. It came from. It's an addition. Amendment to that contract for the additional funds for Burgess and Nigel.
Yeah, but I think our guys are, he's gonna do that over, the whole, this is just the amendment agreement, so they're looking at the amendment, let's wait on this.
I think all the bills got paid. Everybody transferred, everybody got the bill. I took a day off on Friday. My annual boys shopping trip to Columbus.
If you must.
We ain't boys anymore, but we still win.
Okay, what's mileage allowance?
Fifty-two.
Six fifty-eight.
That was accomplished.
Yeah.
I could better when I had it in Newark.
In Newark?
Had it in some kind of place in Newark, it was pretty tight. I felt like I was a fair time last week, I was a fair time last week. Friday, there wasn't really anything at the conference, I was, had a different conference, but in the same place. I was a whole Wednesday, perfect Friday. There was some good sessions. See, we got three minutes, just in case some other news media wants to show up.
I'm not in any hurry.
This is, to replace the one that you just did where she asked for two thousand, she increased it.
I think that's why it's still left in the grant, the wellness grant, so she just put it all in there.
But it's not, it's not two thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. That was before that.
No, that's, she just, the other one, boy.
Okay, so you got rid of the other, okay. From the wellness to general two thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents increased appropriation of wellness payout. The one we did, two thousand dollars, she put all the money in there, added another hundred twenty-four dollars and cents. Second, all favors say aye. I don't have to sign up on this one.
You don't have to.
I don't think so.
So, expense for the convention last week.
So the one that's seriously, the first one's not A yet. Okay, Steve, come on up to the table there, sir.
Well, so, about twenty years ago, I bought, I think, about probably one thirty-eight area. about probably one thirty eight area or whatever. And alongside that, there's a ditch, and we tried to keep it clean and had to go by hand. And there's, I just took a couple pictures so you can see. I'd also bought the adjacent property, last little pool per farm, and it's this ditch here. It runs by the old Job Family Services building out there. We tried to keep it clean and couldn't. So when I bought the other property, we had a land clearing going in. That old property was all grown up. There's like two, three inch, four inch saplings growing in there, bushes and everything. So we took a land clearing in there, got down in the ditch and cleaned it out. But the ditch itself, when it's a ditch, is just a catch-all for trash and there. And so I was working with ODOT on something else, and I asked them about, you know, taking the property, you know, seeing what, I thought it was theirs at the time. And so they did some digging. They were fine with getting rid of it, but they did some digging and it'd been given to you guys back when that Route thirty five limited access was gone. If you look at some of the general plans, this, this one is an overview. This is where it's actually the old Marietta Road. So Marietta Road came up there. And they abandoned it. The stuff on the south side was converted back or sold or whatever. They didn't have records of what exactly happened on that, but it it's into the other landowner's name. That's basically where Kohl's is. And I enlarged this one section so you could see. This is where it says it's to be abandoned. So it was abandoned, and it was abandoned to you guys. So what I want is to, the power line runs concurrent with it. And that ditch is to get that ditch into my name and be able to take that and make the slopes to where we can mow it now. Right now, we try to mow the front of it by hand, but the whole back of it, as you can see, you can't get a tractor down there or anything. And, yeah. That's basically it. But it was originally to be abandoned, and it was abandoned, but it was abandoned rather than back to the property owner. It was abandoned and put back on a quick lane deed to you guys, or it's called one of the directors deed from the ODOT director.
There's no Eastman's involved in this.
Now, the Eastman's back on my property too. And there's no water drains in it. There's never dredging scene. There's no water drains in it. It just grows up. Right now, we're about once a year, we're trying to go down in there and spray weeds or whatever. It's just become a pain in the butt to keep doing that. So if we go out and we put some slope on it, be able to get the mower then, then we can mow it with the rest of the stuff.
So what do you, what do you want? You just want to keep it mowed?
I don't want to be able to grade it to where we can mow it. And it also separates two of my, I own both of these pieces of property. Because I own this piece.
Right.
And I now own this piece. So it actually, it's just a, you go into a piece of property that you don't use, and it's not for grains or anything between my two pieces of property.
We maintain that.
Not more than we're doing. No. You haven't maintained it for twenty years. I've tried to maintain it a couple of times. And now that I've got the other piece of property and cleaned out, a brush in it and everything, I'd like to keep it mowed. So if I mow it now, it just fills up with trash, like it just catches in there and you can't get back out.
It's the piece right across from her stock.
Right.
It's, uh, see if we can blame this by Jeff March. See what he says.
Yeah.
We'll go from there.
And I don't know how the other piece of property was too far back for ODOT guys to see if they paid or whatever. It was a director's thing to you guys or how it was done. They didn't have any records once past that, whether they purchased it, which I'm okay with amount, or if it was just, you know, reverted back to them or whatever. But it's, if you look at the line of sight through there, it's about where Kohl's is. So how, somehow it ended up in the other, the other part that was abandoned, ended up into the current property.
Well, Jeff March is supposed to be the main table, the cabinet of merit.
Okay. And then the second thing while I was here is I think a, Brad, you gave them a copy of the lease, did you?
I have it here. These are the ones from Fayette County.
Yeah. We were in here before about the airports.
Right.
And this is a copy of the lease. You know, we, I think we talked about going up to Fayette County a lot to, everybody goes up there to get fuel. They corrected that somewhat out of Roscana, but you don't have twenty-four hour fuel systems and everything. But Fayette County, same as, Jack, I think you've been over Fairfield County.
Right.
And they build, have people build buildings, private individuals, company, whatever, build buildings on the county property and use them as their hangars and they're giving them commercial stuff. And it's really made, basically Fairfield County has really got a booming airport over there. Now, obviously, they're twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes to Columbus versus us. Their airport, really, their actual runway and everything isn't any better than ours out here. And they built that, Fairfield County has done a great job. Fayette County is just now building a large hangar. They're building it themselves through some grant money. And they also have four other hangars there that are privately owned. And, and so I think that, and I would build one myself. I'd like to, I'm going to buy another airplane. There's no more hangars out there now. And then the guy that was in there with me when we talked, or was in here with me when we talked, Brett Dryden. He and Bill Seaver bought another airplane, and it's too big to fit in the T hangar. Current FBO people or whatever, they won't even put it into big hangar. And so those are the kind of planes you want, the bigger planes and then get people in. But it's worked out really good with Fayette County. Guy Jerry Van Dyke's, the FBO operator over there, they do a great business. A great business. And if you talk to him, he would say, he would love to have this airport. Not so much, he, not that he would want to move here, but he wishes he had the physical facility of that airport because our airport out here, your airport, has a really good base underneath it for loading and is extra, has the extra width that you can get big planes in. You can put some big planes in here. He can't do that up there, but he's making a really good things. And like I say, they're just building a, uh, it's a ten thousand foot plus hangar. This is the lease that they used for theirs, kind of being through their prosecutor and made that up for or whatever came up with it. So that's a template of how they use it. So I wanted you to look at that, you know, whenever you time. It's not something has to happen or do I want it today? But I would build a hangar out there for my own use and Brett's use. We would share it or whatever. And then if they wanted to have it back in the future, like put a buy, buy thing back at Hasty, which, you know, if you had an FBO in there.
First option.
Well, or yeah, hey, I'll sell it. Not just a life thing, but you can go ahead and buy it. Or something like that. That big hangar out there, I think Keith will tell you what he, Keith helped build it, a putt. And it's a big hangar, but it's not good for the small airports running. They built it for one reason, for Malcolm Healy's plane. You can't work in the hangar without freezing your butt off because they didn't heat the floor. They put forced air to you. And since you open those great big doors, you can't just, you lost it all and your frosts. And your feet are standing on cold concrete. So the way they're doing Fayette County, it's, you go ahead and you put the heat in the floor. Now, it doesn't cost much to put it in when you start. Unless you put the heat itself to it, but you can put the tubes in and pre-do that. So if somebody was going to work in there, they could have that for later. That'd be the way, you know. So I'm interested in doing it, whether it's me or say, hey, somebody else, an FBO. Somebody should do that to get that thing started. And I think you're going to find that's going to, doing that kind of stuff is what's helped Fayette County and Fairfield County bring things in. You know, if you'd have done this a long time ago, you'd have Larry Vittito working on airplanes out there instead of going circle. Circle. He may come back. He may want to do something like this. So this is their template. I'd like to build a hangar. So
Where would, where would you like to build your hangar at?
Be on the west.
Yeah, the west end.
On that west.
Yeah, there's plenty of room down there for, there's probably room for ten or twelve hangars down there of decent size.
You know, I think we need to look at potential future here too. When the COVID was here, they were flying shipments and
Oh, yeah.
On jets.
See, that's my thing is just, you know, do you want to build a hangar that's going to be, hold more than your plane? Or, you mean?
Yeah, I would build one. And when you're building, you don't want, you don't want, you don't want this little thirty, it takes basically thirty-five feet to get a plane in, okay? So you don't want to build a forty by thirty hangar. You know, it's very inefficient to put those down. And the big thing is the buy, hold door.
Right.
Uh, on that, it's expensive. And once you put it on, going ten feet more, but generally you want to put a minimum of like a sixty by sixty or an eighty by eighty type building in there. I think those up in Fayette County is smallest one sixty by sixty. But you want to put that in so you can put multiple planes in there. And if you get a chance to run up there, uh, and the guy up there is really, it's kind of like, okay, Fairfield County is kind of up here. Fayette County is kind of, hey, this would be a good stepping stone. And Jerry's really a nice guy. He can tell you, they, they built their own building. So you don't really have to have somebody like me do it or or Larry do it. You can, you can get, there might be money to do one of those. Of course, you already have one big hangar out there. And that's what they built, is that one big, big hangar. What, to do the, get the stuff started, like the radio shops, the, uh, maintenance, like now there's, you can't get your plane working out here. And every year, a plane has to be handled.
Given that business way.
You're just giving that business away. And if you go talk to Jerry too, you know, out here, they're not interested or have never been interested in selling fuels with General Aviation.
We're going to put a stop to that.
And Jerry will tell you what, he, he, he marks up his gas and he goes six thousand gallons a month. So that's some money to make something or doing that. Plus, you get to General Aviation, people will not want to stop there.
Some shop where it's like a car being built.
Yeah.
Well, you know, like, like I'm saying, if we're putting a mega site here or a mega warehouse or something, we're going to be transportation in and out through crosswalks. And I mean, the potential out there.
It's, it's, it's there.
It is.
Most of that sewer line is going to be out there. So that's going to help.
Yeah. Well, that's the thing too, is do you need a toilet? No. But if the sewer line is going to be coming there before you stub up right now, put a sleeve in there just in case you need it. But why you say that this is the lease that Jerry gave us that they're using? And I myself would be interested in building a, a hangar for myself and Brett and Bill. I think they would go in on two. Could build a little bit bigger if we thought when somebody needed. And I'd be okay with just selling it back there. We can build another one. I don't have much, like, you know, it's not that big of a deal to build one. In an open, open hangar, once you built the one, you got the plans, you can build a second one. It's not a lot.
The only voice, the users of the Roscana Airport have right now is the appeals board, right?
Yes.
Is that the only one?
That's the only one I know of. And I really didn't know, Brad explained it to me about that.
Yeah, there's, there's no other board. And really, the only thing they do is, is sell issues like, remember when the lady built the barn?
Right.
And that's to decide whether or not, you know, they make the decision whether or not they, they stepped outside the bounds of the, of the zoning. That's really, there are zoning appeals boards.
Well, since then, and they're mostly pilots, not all pilots, right?
Yeah, no, I don't think so because Kurt, Rick Kurt, he's not a pilot, but he's a landowner right next door.
Sorry.
So he's got an interest, yeah.
Right. But, you know, I think we need to get those people together and just, let's just brainstorm what that could be out there, what they would want, what they've always wanted to see out there, but haven't.
Well, those guys and these guys, I mean, if you can get local, local pilots.
Yeah, that certainly have to be on that board, but we need, we need a voice of the users of that airport to see what they want to see out there.
Well, there's quite a few. I know when I was out there the last time, there was the guy who used to work at Chilpeco, Chuck.
Chuck Gooden.
Chuck Gooden's a pilot out there. He said the same thing, you know, you guys ever going to get together and talk about this? I'd love to, love to be a part of that. And that's what we, that's what we need to do. Cause I was out there Thursday or Friday. I was wanting another bill. Nobody was, I didn't see no one.
Yeah, you could swap in there.
I think about getting some radios and stuff like that. I didn't know what to do with them.
Jerry, uh, Van Dyke's a, um, he's a local guy from Greenfield, but he runs Fayette County pretty successful out of it. He's got, they have some, a lot of other cool things going on there, uh, with it too. They bring in, they get flying stuff going in. And, but he's got a good maintenance. So like, a lot of people take these planes up now. He's got a nice sixty by sixty or hangar in there that's nice and warm. Bring them in and out. He works on them. And he's got a good business there. He's got a good gas system. Every time you go up there, you'll see a, you see heavy lift helicopter, a crop sprayer, so somebody's there or there's planes backing up, you know, for him to work on. So you're getting some things. And like I say, they've vetted this out and they have four or five hangars there. And then they bring up that one big hangar at the end. You go up there and see that, what they've done, and you'd say, wow, this from the first sight, it's like, well, they're way ahead of us, but then they can never be ahead of us. Not that you're getting ahead, but they just don't have the runway and there's no way of redo, you can't redo the runway once you don't have the base in it. You just can't do it. It's, it's, so you have way better facilities as far as infrastructure, except for need to get some people to like start doing the hangars, start getting some business. And I don't need any kind of an answer on this now. Obviously, we're not going to do anything now, but come about March first or something like that, if you guys can kind of figure it out, say, Steve, go ahead and build a hangar out there. This is, you know, Jeff looked at the lease. I would go ahead and build a hangar. Doesn't take that long to put it up, you know, just basic hangar. Doesn't take that long. Sixty, ninety days. So it'd be nice to have one up by, you know.
Falling.
And yeah, you can get it. If you, like, March first, we'd have it done by June. Something like that.
It's good to move dirt all at one time for multiple.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you've got to, you, I don't think you really have to move much dirt. I think you, you, you have building sites or you'd have to do a little bit. But I think you just can peel stuff off of the hangars.
Or, I mean, if it's done right.
Yeah, yeah. But you, you're going to have to peel the dirt back. It's pretty level. I mean, it's the whole west side's level. So if you, just think about that and, you know, go over and look at some of the things. And then like I say, if you're interested in like doing that, I'll go ahead and put a hangar up. Or, you know, I think there might get one or two other people that might do it to get started. I think Larry would be a really good person to get started because he's got STCs to work on planes. So he's got a business business out there.
Yeah, he converts nationally aspirated engines to turbo engines.
Yeah, so he's
Aircraft goes through the roof. It's a, it's an innovative.
He's got two or three of them. So he, he'd be a good one too. But like I said, I want to buy, I don't have a place to put a plane or I'd buy one now. I have one plane, but I don't, I'm buying a bigger one. I can't. There's no place for me to put it. Brett has to drive get his plane in. There's no reason for that.
Especially when you got an airport, our, after it's got land and you need to put things out there.
Yeah. So, all right. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, House.
Yeah, let's get this to Jeff and have him look at that. And we need to, we need to get all the guys from the airport together.
I think Kathy just dreamed of it.
It's not going to be the first of the year because we've got budgets here.
Just so we get a comprehensive of what we're, what we're dealing with, could be dealing with. Start putting that project together.
Regulations are noted on that ditch. I can, you know, in fact, I thought maybe I did, but let me make sure. Do you have that stuff?
Yeah, I got.
Well, I don't know about you, but I'm not a real fan of county-owned property. Right now, you know, if it was, you know, if they really wanted to push it, we didn't be out there cleaning that ditch out. Well, I never dealt with any of those director deeds until probably a month ago. And Charlie was talking about where they wanted to put that convention visitors bureau sign welcome to Chillicothe out on a, a piece of property out on twenty-three that was director's deed. So that's the first time I'd ever had anything done with it. But he asked me about it. I said, what are you going to talk to the commissioners? And I think he did even talk, he and Jeff are friends, and I think he did talk to Jeff about two, and Jeff told him the same thing. It, it was a ditch before they built thirty-five. And it ran from Marietta Road, like he was saying, he kept talking about Kohl's. Kohl's is on the other side of thirty-five. And it ran that way towards the river. So everything drained towards the side of the river. Well, once they built twenty, or thirty-five bypass there, the ditch is no longer, if you, if you go around that corner on Marietta Road, it, it actually tilts the other way. It tilts towards, towards Hearnsides. So the ditch is just, there's no reason for it now. I don't know what the, I don't know what the process is, you know, maybe with owning both sides of the property. Give that, I don't know. You may have to auction it. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what's it, you know.
Have to ask Jeff. I'll send it over to him.
Yeah, cause we definitely need to. On the other, we need, definitely.
Well, I'm working on that. I'm working on that. R, RFP for FBO. I've got that in my, in my stuff.
Got anything else, right?
Um, just waiting on, about ten minutes. I'm, I'm going to send out the notice, uh, I've awarded the notice to proceed for the jail project this week. I finally got that back from. Along with their contract. So I'll send that to them, let them sign it first. And then when they're done with it, get it back. Hopefully start by being, well, I hope it's, I think it'll take longer if it's only eight page contracts. And then we've got, uh, we've got eight RFQs for the, uh. Instruction manager at risk for the, for the, uh, courthouse project. Which we're going to have to put a, uh, what do you want to call it? An advisory or a review committee together. Review all eight of those to decide who you want.
Who you want.
So who do you, who would you like to have on there?
Well, I talked to you this morning about it. I'm like, like you said, I like that school lead on there.
Okay.
On that, see if they will key on that. Cause they know, they know what they're doing. They know what, what we're looking for.
Well, we need to have a commissioner or two on there.
Right. Got to have at least one. If we have two, then we're going to end up saying we got to be.
Jack, what do you think? Anybody else? I mean, it's eight, eight big documents to read through.
I think having somebody with, um. For the courthouse, the jail and the fountain. But not the LCM people, right?
The LCM is not in there. It's, it's just, yeah, just this building and a.
I think we need to have somebody from downtown sort of. Someone from the store society. Just, just so we're keeping true to all the. Confirming issues of a historic building. Even though this is a newer building than most of the other ones downtown considered historic, it's still part of the landscape. And it's congruent with the architecture theme of downtown.
Got anybody in mind? Think about it.
Let me think about that.
Excuse me just a minute. Hey, Stan.
Kathy, you going in there?
No.
I'm probably going to. Canal. Smokehouse.
Okay.
Is that where we got through the, or we go pay for that district sometime?
Would you guys want to do a proclamation for Delight? At that party since he's.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm tiring.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
Do you want to do it then? Or would you rather do it another time?
I think that's, that's a good plan. Through time you do that.
You should have most of us.
Yeah, I'm there, yeah.
Hopefully it's not watching right now.
Yeah, he won't come.
Yeah.
I gotta get this set up.
Um, are you wanting to do a separate computer?
Well.
We're probably going to ask for Andy up here to do it.
Let's call.
What we did the last time was we just put on a different computer.
Is that what it is?
This can, because we haven't quite figured.
But then they can't see it, right?
Well.
You're right.
They can't see the issue.
Yeah.
Cause we, we need you guys to be able to see it. Andy. We need the Andy one.
Yeah.
Here, you guys go on that contract.
Yeah, we was just trying to figure out why we're, why we were paying a twenty, twenty-three. It was either not billed or it was missed before I got here.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're just cleaning up some mess.
I think it was not billed, but it is a legitimate expense. Um, the next week we'll pay the twenty, twenty-four. So it's, I'll make a motion to pay that.
We never did.
And that was no appropriation increase. I was just transfer money to pay it.
Cause we was trying to figure out. Who they were, what, what.
It's the other website.
Okay.
So when you go on, I'll get Ross County. I told the guy, you guys must be doing well if you're not sweating a seventeen thousand dollar annual budget. You know what I mean? And he laughed about that.
Andy's on his way up.
Do you get all Andy or? We have an overall viewpoint of both submitted budgets versus revenue versus expense adjustments.
It's rated around three million.
Three million.
Which is close to what it was last year, so higher than last year. We've got about twenty million carryover. So we got a lot to work with. But. If you want to do it the same way you did it last year, it's a matter of turning back expenses to match that revenue figure.
Well, I, I got a question on some expenses. So. They've got a, a good, a good project lined out and it has metrics and measurements for ROI and that, things like that. Then I'll be pretty lenient on what they want to spend their money on. But if it's just. What George puts together, I don't know. We need to get a better budget.
We had an opportunity. Yeah. And that's one of the things I want to talk about today.
But you guys, what do I think?
So I just, I just talked to Steve.
So what we need, I'd like to be able to put the budget.
It's okay. So you guys can open up new tabs. It's still running in the background. So long as we don't close out of this. Or end it if you wanted to. Sign it and come back.
Uh, yeah.
They always say, when Jim left this all my life, I don't know what to do.
They don't want to build it. We're not streaming like my password.
No, we're not sharing anything.
Yeah, I think my password. Oh.
Cause we only have the first word. Yeah, if, if we ever, if we ever get moving. So. Hopefully we'll have something done soon that we can put out.
I was going to stop one of the field trips.
Well, they said it's a bill today, but we're not trust.
It's okay to click this to make sure that you're typing what you think you typed in.
Well.
So.
We own the airport.
Right.
I think if it had the right, how it wasn't, if you had the right FBO. Company, person, whatever.
Right.
We can still do it. We can still maintain the property. You know, we can still. Not just maintain the property, but lights are out, you know, reels, happy's need replaced, working with the engineers to keep the property.
Right.
Up to speed. I mean, that stuff we've already done, we, we should keep doing. We should never get that up. But as far as running the day to day, there ought to be. Yeah, exactly. And a dollar a gallon.
Yeah, what I'm saying, well, you know, but you do have, uh. Sort of industry that are getting so much. I've got it set to show right now. Right. And then you, you just.
Yeah, and then we can pour back.
Little bit. I saw it was, I think, ten to three. And then I saw at the end it was thirty-eight, three.
Right.
It's nice to hear that there's some Ohio teams don't choke under pressure.
I'm sorry to say you're right.
Oh, sorry.
Cause I need to, I have a signing to get you access. You gotta get into VIP. And then get into. Although. I need my desktop to be able to access analytics. Can you get me into analytics from here?
We may have it.
Before you do that, let me. So I gotta get it through with that. Into VIP.
We can get analytics. Kind of wait down, but I think we have analytics already on here.
Okay.
Cause we've done order revision stuff. You can hear it for it.
He's going to show, also be shown on the live stream?
Uh, I can't speak to exactly what he complains to share about my suspicions, yes.
And we have to get them to do service. They didn't do neither one. They knew neither one.
Sean is called. I was going to send those to Eve, and I told her to send them to you. And if you do your thing, then we can do it.
Shane, you're getting me a lot of dog in today.
Yeah, I got chili sauce.
She says she can play.
Trying to tell them, trying to get it in today. Everybody can check.
With me and Jeff were out to, out there. They didn't tell us we were on the board.
Took them to senior.
Yeah, they didn't tell us we were on the board.
Either that or they didn't want to tell us.
As far as our concerns, we have a live. Cause we have to give them six months notice that we want to renegotiate or get out of there.
Right.
And that happens in June. Cause it's got to be before the start of the next month. We're too late this year. So twenty twenty-five, we.
So that means you got to notify it. So we got, we got to put our.
Okay, so now.
So if you want to kick off analytics, we'll see if it's on there.
How you doing? All right. So analytics, haven't we?
So how do you bring up analytics in the way in the IT or is there a section where you can?
Analytics is its own application.
I remember that. I thought, and maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe I'm thinking it's something else. So.
Are we live or not live?
We're live.
We are.
My big, my big ugly mug in the.
Yeah.
All we can see is Andy's head.
That's right. It's a great show. Blair off my head. Prevent him from seeing anything.
We're live, but Andy's working on getting the budget on that screen. So everybody can see it.
That's not how you spell it. Cause I've been on. I just don't know that there's around sunshine. If.
Can't have those of you that. You can't. You can, you can until January.
Yeah. Till January the third or second or whatever.
So you guys talking about the senior center? I were, I were. Okay. Well, so. One thing to keep in mind that the contract we're working on with them refers to a half mill levy that was passed in twenty fourteen. I believe the contract was signed in twenty fifteen, but I think it was, I have to look up this year. But then it was in twenty sixteen, an additional three terms. Three mill levy was passed that is not referred to in the contract. So contractually, all you're obligated to give them is that half mill. You can retain that three tenths of a mill. Kind of as a leverage point if you want to renegotiate or if you want to redirect funds. Like, to me, that is totally within your prerogative.
But they're not living up to the contract.
Yeah, I agree.
I totally agree. So that. So that's the immediate leverage you guys have to change. Attitudes or whatever you want to call it.
We just got to determine solace.
Yeah.
And we, and we already got an IPO effect.
Okay. So, so, um. But however we can help, let me know.
So analytics is on here. However, the account signed in that this computer does not have any access to analytics. It's just the generic display account.
So we need to log in with my credentials.
But then we'd be still live streaming. We wouldn't interrupt that, but you wouldn't be able to share across two separate logins. We'd still be live streaming everything that's on that screen, but you wouldn't be able to live stream the analytics part.
Well, that's not critical. I mean, we could share that, Shelby, if you wanted, we could share that with you.
Yeah.
And for what it's worth, Joe, if it's something you can download later, I can add it to the meeting description, same way we did last week with. Playing into department's website and the grant information. Put that on the ID description later. So anyone that sees it, here's a reference.
Okay.